Evening. If you have anything you want to tell us, you have three minutes to let us know what's on your mind and in your heart. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and city of residence and direct your comments to the chair. Okay. Seeing no public comment, Ms. Mitchell, have we received any correspondence for this evening?
No, ma'am, Madam Mayor, we have not.
Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular City Council meeting on Monday, September 16th, 2024, and City Council work session on Monday, September 9th, 2024. Two, motion number M-8624, matter of approving the proposal from Asa Abloy to provide and install new automatic entry doors at the community center in the amount of $22,000 and $4,500 in construction contingencies. This project is being funded by the fiscal year 2024 special grant from the state of Michigan. Three, proclamation number P-2424, matter proclaiming October 14th, 2024 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Four, proclamation number P-2524, matter proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, please read item number two.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation on the 2023-24 Community Development Department Annual Report.
Thank you. Mr. Guynsor, anything to add?
No.
Nice to see you, Ms. Kapalansky.
Nice to see you all as well. Good evening. So I wanted to take this opportunity.
Doesn't really sound like it.
It's not sounding like it is.
Just check. Got it. There you go. That's better.
Uh huh.
So I wanted to take this opportunity to share with the City Council and the community as a whole, the activities that the Community Development Department has been up to in the last fiscal year. So if you'll recall, as I come before you every year, to brag a little bit about our department, this is a requirement by state law that at least compile compilation of the Planning Commission's activities. And then redevelopment ready certification program, which takes that a step farther, requires that we.
Here, come over here.
The redevelopment ready's community program requires an annual report of all of our boards and commissions. So we've taken the opportunity to expand that, to showcase our entire department as well, and also give you an idea of things that you might be seeing in the coming year that we'll be working on. So I'll make this quite brief, and I want to give a lot of credit to my team as well. Kim Anderson, our zoning administrator, Angela Randazzo, our licensing clerk, Dana Bauer, our permit clerk, and Emily Loomis, the building official. And we've all worked in conjunction with our representatives at McKenna and our boards and commissions to keep the Community Development Department on track this year. So the Planning Commission had the opportunity to make, approve several improvements to previously approved site plans, but their main plans that they approved this year were the Columbia and the J on Woodward. So they did a lot of back and forth with those applicants and did a nice job of that. The Zoning Board of Appeals held eight meetings approving dimensional and use variances, or in some case denying those requests, and they made one mural determination. We'll keep an eye on things as the new ordinance progresses to see if there's anything that we need to address as variance has come before the Zoning Board of Appeals, things that may have slipped through the cracks. Our building and trade permits were generally on par with previous years, and you see that we issued, most of our code violations were for debris and grass and weeds. There's also been a number of code amendments that we've worked on this year, requiring construction fencing on all sites, allowing for DPW inspection of sewers, which provides better customer service, since those can be done five days a week instead of just two. And then also, we adopted an ordinance for parklets. We've had the chance to collaborate with other departments as well on on-street parking updates, which were launched today, the annual parking permit, launching of the social district, and the expansion of public parking. And then obviously, our big project for the year and continues into the next fiscal year has been the zoning ordinance rewrite. We have a fairly solid draft at this point. We'll be rolling that out to the public in a more formal form later this month, and we will be at the Bookley Celebration on October 26th with a booth to share that with the public as well. There'll be interactive opportunities, too. Our other big accomplishments for this year, we're engaging BSNA to create the BSNA online platform for Berkeley. So we'll be talking in the next few weeks about expanding the opportunities for people to apply online for that within our department. And then also, we brought our building official in-house, which I'd like to thank the council for the support of. That has been a tremendous step for us and really helped us to provide better customer service to our residents and to business customers, and also to improve our processes. It's just been wonderful to have that in-house. In the next fiscal year, we're hoping to roll out an interactive GIS map for all residents and potential investors to use. I had mentioned the zoning ordinance, there's a number of implementation items that you'll see me bring back to you as part of that, as like a part two. We're also working with the Department of Public Works on developing engineering design standards. That's going to take a lot of the standards that are already in our city code and put them in one place, but also expand them to make sure that we're getting all of the things that we need in terms of stormwater and things like that. And then lastly, I hope to be before you at some point in the next fiscal year, presenting our RRC certification, because after the zoning ordinance, we just have a couple other documents to take care of. So if you have any questions, I will step back over there to my regular place.
Well, I just want to say thank you for this report and for all the hard work that's been going on. I've been paying particular attention to the BSNA stuff, and I am not really geeky or nerdy, but I understand the value of that software and so many applications. So seeing your department not only embrace it, but then take it to the next level is encouraging, and I thank you for that. The zoning ordinance rewrite, for sure, that's been a long time coming. I know that you've been working on it for two years. And as my friend Alan Simonian is fond of saying, "Some of our ordinances were written when you could still smoke on airplanes." So if you can remember when that was a thing, then you're as old as me. But it's nice to see this rewrite happening, so that we're bringing these ordinances in step with our master plan, with our strategic plan. You want things to look like they belong together, and that's what this does. So thank you for your hard work on that. And then lastly, the Dorothea project, I'm very excited for that. Appreciate the grant from SEMCOG and your work to get that, and now your work in managing it. I know that's no small task either. So, so thank you for all of that. Any other?
Absolutely.
Comments or questions?
I just have, it's more of a thanks to you, and please tell your team and the Planning Commission, I am the liaison and I see them very often, but it's incredible amount of work that you guys do behind the scenes, and I'm just appreciative, and I know the residents are too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I have pretty much the same. You know, your department's accomplished a lot this year and a lot to be proud of, and you know, thank you for the work you've done and your team, and really excited to see what you bring us this year.
Me too.
Councilmember Black?
So I love your energy as a leader. I love your recognition of your team and everything that you all are doing. So, because you're beaming with energy, I just want to ask, so what's the next step for you? You all are doing a phenomenal job, so maybe just kind of give us some insight into what you see as the growth direction for your department and your team.
So with the zoning ordinance adapted, hopefully here in the next three months or so, I'm hoping that we can start to realize some of the visions in the master plan. So the direction that I see us going is, one, we'll get that zoning ordinance adapted, and there's a number of policies and things that are going to have to be implemented as part of that. So that would be the part two that I'm talking about coming forward. With the engineering design standards in place as well, I'm hoping that we're primed to catch economic development that might want to come our way, with ordinances that are updated and friendly and make sense, and with engineering design standards that lay out what people are going to have to invest upfront, so they're not surprised on the backend with things that might come in later in the process. Then I'm hoping we can take those tools and partner potentially, reach out to the MEDC for partnerships, and see if we can bring some more private development to the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you to you and your team. I echo my colleagues' comments here of appreciation and gratitude for the work that's been done, all the volunteers that leaned into this, too. And a small piece I'll add is the partnership with which you interact with the other departments. So much of this stuff you guys are taking lead on and charging forward, and there are other things where you need help in working together and collaborating across the table with others here in the city, and I think that's commendable as well. So, thanks, and I'm looking forward to an exciting next year and to see all the great things that can help move the city forward.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
One last thing. I really want to shout out to the Planning Commission members and the ZBA Board of Appeals. Those residents, you know, those two committees are a heavy lift, not saying other ones aren't, but there's always additional education for those things, too. So, thank you to all of them and for your leadership on those as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Guynsor?
If I could make just one comment?
Of course.
Before she sits down. So I really am appreciative of the fact of council recognizing good leadership and the strength of a department, without me even having to say anything. But having, sitting in the office that I sit in, Kristin and I have already had some words about her operation there, but I hear the customer service every day, and I have not quite seen a level like that in the communities that I've been in, so kudos to their work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-8724, matter of approving an applicant for issuance of an on-premise liquor license under section 521A 1B of 2006 PA 501 MCL 436.1521A 1B. Applicant Berkeley Brosery LLC, 3180 Coolidge Highway, Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-8724?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Guynsor?
Ms. Mitchell handles all of these applications, so I'm going to turn it over to her to walk you through it.
Yep, absolutely. We did receive the application in from Mr. Formant, who's with us this evening. It was reviewed by all applicable departments. The Department of Public Safety and the Community Development Department did sign off and gave their approval for this.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from council for Ms. Mitchell? Okay. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about your restaurant?
Any questions about it, I guess? I think a lot of people heard about it on 3180 at Coolidge. Yeah, I mean, there's not, I guess, too much to tell at this point. It's not going to be called Berkeley Brosery, I can tell you that.
Okay.
It's a working title, and I'm very stressed about it, but we don't have a name yet. But we're slated for, I'm shooting for April opening, which means it'll probably be June or July. But yeah, we're working hard on it, and this is just, you know, one of the steps we have to do. The redevelopment liquor license is such a huge thing for us, because we're already, you know, way over budget and behind, and it's definitely a lifeline, so we're super appreciative of it. And yeah, is there any questions about it? I can tell you anything?
Councilmember Black?
Yes, what do you believe that your restaurant is going to add to the community overall, be it with its menu, or its flair, its aesthetic, things like that?
Absolutely. So I've been a resident here for about 14 years, and I've worked in the city. I opened a bar, Pigal, in Brush Park, and I've been in hospitality my whole life. So this restaurant's definitely going to be different than my first project, which was French. This one's going to be New American Comfort, is what we're calling it. So the idea is, it will be, I would say, the more upscale place in Berkeley, but it'll be very family-friendly. There'll be something on the menu for everybody. It'll certainly be indoor/outdoor, a good amount of space. You know, I've got a family as well, so that's one of the things with Bar Pigal in Detroit that's tough, is it's very niche. So this is going to be family-friendly, you know, service to the community, but also really traditional hospitality is what I'm going for. You know, I've followed the trends for years and years, and there's nothing just beats just good old-fashioned hospitality. So there'll be no snobbiness. It'll be all about the hospitality. We'll have high chairs, booster seats, and everything. But again, it will be, you know, we'll have some higher-end stuff, and it'll definitely give people a look in this specific community that they might have not seen before, but it'll be comfortable. If that makes sense, yeah.
Well, my husband and I have eaten at Bar Pigal numerous times, and we've never been disappointed. So if you're bringing that level of experience and hospitality and quality to your food, I'm really excited, plus you're in walking distance to my house. Not that that matters.
I'm on Phillips, I can't wait.
Okay.
It would be better than Bar Pigal, I promise you that. I'm so excited.
That makes me even more excited, so. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
What, sorry, wait.
Anybody else?
Councilmember Henan, sorry.
Yeah. Usually this is a routine. Tonight, this one isn't, handing out a liquor license. So Mr. Formant, I can't know what's in your heart now, or what has changed, but you know, within the last two years, convicted of operating while impaired, still on parole for that. I don't know what the future has for you. There's a 25% rabidism rate for that. I am not comfortable with giving a liquor license in this situation. There just hasn't been enough time passed to know if a leaf has been turned over or not, so.
Do you want to comment to that, or?
I mean, I can definitely comment to that. You are absolutely correct. It's been about two years, and I have been off probation for, you know, several months, obviously not that long. I can tell you, I definitely learned my lesson. I'm 43, I've never been busted for anything in my entire life, except for this, which was a huge hiccup, and I was only a couple points over, there's no excuse, but I can tell you, I haven't had a sip of alcohol since, and it is a struggle being in the hospitality business and being around it for so long. And having worked in, I worked for Great Lakes Wine and Spirits for eight years, so I've been in the liquor distribution side as well, so it's kind of, you know, it's in and around it, so. So either way, I've certainly learned my lesson, quite honestly, more than most people would, because it was such a shock to me and my family. And I looked at it, I mean, it's obviously not good, but I looked at it as a positive, because literally, it was a game changer. I'm healthier now, I haven't had a sip. You know, wine tastings have been tough, but I literally, yeah, I can promise you, there's no issue on my end, but I do understand your hesitancy for sure.
Well, thank you for your honesty and being upfront about this. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Any other comments or questions from council? Public comment?
Good evening to this honorable body. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. We have a very unique downtown with our one mile this way, one mile that away, and I just wanted to flag that the nature of these licenses are because they are within that DDA district, it's within the state law, and this honorable body and our community has been able to benefit from that unique tool, you know, sort of tool in the economic development toolbox in our community, but that Michigan allows. So there have been a small number that have been utilized in the last five years, and I think that the community and this council can see that it has not been a detriment, but has been a positive addition to our, the vibrancy and the thriving nature of the downtown district that we seek to further cultivate. So Monger's provisions, they utilized a redevelopment liquor license as one example for their rind, expansion, award-winning, but it's really added to the downtown district. Obviously, El Patio, filling that long vacant and large space. Also on 12 Mile, it was this particular redevelopment liquor license that they utilized to make their establishment viable, and it's been a big draw and a big asset for our downtown. So I just want to give those as perspectives, that it has not led to a severe spike in public safety incidents, it's not led to substantial public intoxication issues or other aspects that would be a detriment to our community. So I just wanted to flag that as a frame of reference about that product. And then I just want to, and I'm sorry for being more verbose than usual, I don't know, I'm often quite loquacious, but it's really important when we're looking at sort of this L of our downtown, we've got really dynamic aspects that are public-facing and have a lot of walkability and very desirability, but there are some sparse stretches. And this location at Coolidge and Beverly is really crucial to help us fortify and better interlink and connect the vibrant portions of our downtown. And that's no knock on the businesses that are there right now, there's actually really fascinating, interesting businesses, but they're not as public-facing, they're not as retail or restaurant dining destinations. And if you look at this in particular location at Beverly and Coolidge, that business, that building has been vacant and unsightly for a number of years, so what this, this team is proposing and providing with this new dining establishment is not only a destination, high-end, it's really elevated, but it really helps us connect and interlink the many different parts of our long, vast downtown. So I sincerely advocate for the approval of this application. I'm grateful to the applicant for putting their stakes into downtown Berkeley, because we know there are so many different parts of our region they can go to. They've chosen well, and I think that it would be to the benefit of our community, but also to them finding a place that can be vibrant. So I hope that that can move forward. And as the applicant indicated, obviously, there's a lot more steps and expense to come, but this is really crucial in terms of making it a viable destination for them to be competitive. And it obviously won't be the main element or aspect of their operations based on my assessment of the situation, but it allows them to be competitive and makes the numbers work. So I hope it can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Further discussion, Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to say, for anyone who has driven by the building site or has lived in the neighborhood, it's a very, from the outside, old. It's kind of an eyesore, quite frankly, and we have seen within our community before when someone takes the time and energy and breathes new life into some of these buildings, how it can just reinvigorate a whole section. As Director McGinnis was saying, that L kind of intersection there, there's several buildings that are waiting for that next adventure, or whatever it may be. So I'm really hoping that you're going to create some excitement and energy over there. I can't wait to check it out and try it, and I am just really happy that as people are driving by, they're going to see this, I've seen the renderings, this beautiful new building there, where something, you know, not so beautiful is right now, and I think it's going to breathe some new life into that corner.
I just have, excuse me, one thing. Mr. Forefront, I thought I said that right, Formant? I appreciate you investing in Berkeley and making it better. We all have a past, I will never hold that against you, so I appreciate you. I believe that you're honest, and I'm looking forward to investing in your establishment. So thank you for bringing it to me. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for coming forward tonight and bringing this for our consideration. As the liaison to the DDA, I've been familiar with the conversation, and over the last few months, as the excitement built towards tonight's opportunity to make a decision. And as our executive director mentioned, that you're putting your stakes down in Berkeley, I look forward to trying them, I hope they're, I hope they're well-seared and tasty.
Oh, yeah. They are.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Ms., oh, sorry, I didn't. Councilmember Black?
Yeah, and this is more, so, full disclosure, I don't know what it says about me, but I have friends in the hospitality, in hospitality game, as they would say, and so, you know, we talk about our Mexican establishment, having a James Beard chef, award winner. I think it would be remiss without mentioning it, Mr. Formant is considered one of the best Mexologists in the country slash world, and his lineage in some of these establishments, I've been to the Oakland, been to Sugar House, so.
Oh, you know.
Want to say, like, what, the people that he's trained are considered some of the best, and they've trained from him, so this is, I think, an outstanding opportunity for our community. Not discounting anything that Councilmember Henan said, but to echo Councilmember Patterson, we all have a past, and doesn't seem to me that anything you've done prior or since has stopped excellence in your profession, and so that will determine my vote tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Everybody good? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-8724?
Henan?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-8724 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-8824, matter of approving the creation of a new community field number one enterprise fund, authorizing an interfund loan, and awarding a bid for community field number one improvements to Worry Free Outdoor Services, Inc., in the amount of $179,580.
Is there a motion to approve M-8824?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Guynsor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Seems like this has been a topic of discussion since even before I walked in this door, and what we have before you tonight, I think, is a very unique collaboration, and I want to thank the Dads Club for bringing this idea forward. As you all know, we were looking at some potential collaboration through an agreement. Ultimately, we decided not to move forward. Tonight's approach that we're going to be talking through is very, very different than what you've seen before. So just to reorient everybody, again, what we're talking about is community field one. Community field one has primarily been used by Dads Club and Berkeley Public Schools for as long as it's been there, is my understanding. It has served the community fairly well, but it hasn't seen any investment in many years, and that's in part why Berkeley Public Schools came to us, looking at an opportunity for a long-term investment. We have grade issues out there, drainage is a huge issue out there, there's a number of times when we can't utilize the field, and we have Dan McMinn here tonight as well if there's questions about the field. We also did some grass additions behind home plate and down some baselines roughly a number of years ago, that makes it harder for us to maintain them. And ultimately, as you recall, we said, you know what, this conversation with the schools are, we don't, we can't go with this strategy for now, but, you know, let's keep the conversations going, and that's exactly what's happened over the last month or so. So essentially, just to kind of give you the high points as far as what we're talking about here, and obviously, we're here to answer any questions, we're talking about issuing two long-term permits, or five-year permits, between Dads Club and the Berkeley Public Those details around those permits, yes, are still coming together, and again, we're ready to answer any questions that you have. In part, what is bringing us forward tonight is trying to bring, get some work done before the construction- the construction season has closed for the year. Ultimately, the goal is to bring improvements about that could be used for next season. So how do we get there? This is what we're proposing. We would create Community Field Enterprise, Community Field One Enterprise Fund. Essentially, as we talk about permit and permit fees, our first point was to ensure that those dollars that are brought in through those permit fees, or any permit fees, unrelated to Dads Club and Berkeley Public Schools stays in COM1. All of our expenses come from COM1. And essentially, we're pulling it off on its own. The general fund, and this is an area that we'll have to talk about later, I should have done my math a little differently, but the general fund would provide an interfund loan to this new enterprise fund in the amount of $200,000, or depending on what we decide to do on a contingency, $215,000. This is an allowable loan that can be done. It's not uncommon. But when you do an interfund loan, just like anything, you have to have the interest as well. So we'd provoke, we'd propose a five-year loan, which aligns with the permits that we're going to discuss here in a minute, at an, a interest rate which is about current market rate at 4.5%. The city would issue two five-year permits, one to Berkeley Public Schools for exclusive usage rights, with some caveats that I'll get to, from roughly March 1st to May 31st, with some options for an extension during the playoffs. The annual permit fee would start at $35,000. It would have a 3% annual escalator. We would have 50% due at the start of the season and 50% due at the end. The city would issue a five-year permit to Berkeley Dads Club for exclusive usage rights, with caveat, June 1 through July 31st, and September 1 through October 31st. Again, they have two seasons. They have a summer ball and they have a fall ball. Again, the annual permit fee would be $35,000 to start with a 3% escalator. We just set theirs up with 50% due prior to the start of season number one, or summer, and then the other 50% is prior to the fall season. With that, the city will still retain the right to issue permits to other users. Essentially, though, Berkeley Public Schools and Dads Club, much like they do now, would have first right of refusal. So here's how this would work. Let's say June 5th, we have a user, they're going to call up Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec's going to look at the calendar, oh, it's open, there's no game or, or practice scheduled. We're going to make a phone call to the schools. Do you have anything planned that we don't know about? No, we can issue the permit. And then when it's an off-season, we would just make that call on our own. However, one of the things that we want to also address with this, as, as we've heard some feedback, to ensure that we are maintaining this field after such an investment, is we're going to be updating our usage terms and fee schedule. So in other words, right now, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, when we give out a, a usage permit, it's pretty basic. There's not like terms of use. We have no clawbacks if there is significant damage or anything like that. So we'd be laying out these terms. The schools and Dads Clubs would also be subject to those, but much of their stuff would be covered under their fee. But let's say, for example, we put it out for a permit. We do a walkthrough, just like when you rent a car, before and after. Damage exceeds a deposit, we're going to pull it from the deposit, or we're going to bill you. And that would all be laid out there. Again, all of those revenues would stay in the enterprise fund. Again, we would retain responsibility for the maintenance, although we are going to be looking at, okay, is, are we doing it all in-house? Is this a hybrid? Are we, are we contracting out some of it, and we're doing some of it? Those are still to be determined. Again, all revenues, all expenditures, the, the design of this is to keep it in COM1. So especially for the next five years, we're not coming back and talking about COM1 again. This buys us time to look at longer-term solutions. It also gives us a, a good jumping point to build relations with the schools and the Dads Club. We're imagining that this group, especially early on, I think we would be meeting quarterly to kind of talk through how this is all working, maintenance practices, all of those types of things. To help get this moving, we worked with the Dads Club and the schools to finalize the scope of work that was ultimately put out for an RFP. This is to replace, I don't know if there's a technical turf for it, but basically a national, a natural turf field. This is not what was originally discussed of an artificial turf. The scope of work was issued on the 17th. Responses were due on the 1st. We had 66 copies downloaded and ultimately received two responses plus one, what I would call a no bid. A no bid is basically saying, we just, we're in, we looked at it, we're interested, but we're not bidding on it. We believe the responses, lower, lowish response is not uncommon with everything else we put out to bid. It's a busy market right now, plus we are really trying to shoehorn some work into the end of the year, which makes it tough. The lowest most qualified bidder was Worry Free Outdoor Services, which we are recommending for this scope of work. I, I would note that they have also done work for us in the past on Community Fields Two and Three, which we have found to be satisfactory. Also should be noted, which will be for a future discussion, probably as a part of the budget amendment process, for whatever reason, the concession in bathrooms have been closed for a number of years down there. Our deputy city manager, Sean Young, and Dan McMinn, our Parks and Rec Director interim, have been working with Alex to figure out how to bring those and open them back up. We think it can be done. We're just waiting on pricing. So with this next season, we would also anticipate having a usable concession restroom facility. I already kind of, I've already talked about the standing working group, and something we've talked about that I think we're pretty excited about is the field would just be the first step. What we imagine is this working group would begin to look at what other capital needs exist out there and work on building strategies to raise capital to make further investments out in that field. Again, we're trying to pull this field and make it more self-reliant. So ultimately, tonight, we're recommending that you authorize the city manager to, to create the Community Field One Enterprise Fund, and the execution of an interfund loan in the amount of, again, depending on what you guys decide, $200,000 or $215,000 from the general fund cash reserve for a term of five years at 4.5%. We would further authorize the award a bid for Community Field One, field improvements to Worry Free Outdoor Services in the amount of $179,580. We initially did a 20% contingency. That's why either we lower the contingency or we raise the loan fund. The reason we went a little higher than we normally do on a contingency is because the conditions that the field is in, and not knowing what we're going to find when we get in there, we wanted to make sure we had, we're satisfactorily covered for unforeseen conditions with project coming, project funding, again, coming from that enterprise fund. With us tonight is Dave from the Dads Club. Schools have a meeting tonight. I believe both have reached out, kind of expressing just how some of the collaboration has been working. I do understand that there is a little bit on the table here with the permits not being in place, but we have very strong commitments from both parties. We believe this is the solution that gets things done at the field. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to council for any questions or conversation.
Is there anything that Mr. McMinn would like to add before we jump in with questions?
I believe everything was covered. As Mr. Geiser said, this permit process is something that we have had in place before. The schools typically use it for practices and games between March and right around June 1st, which is when their season typically comes to an end, as discussed. If they do make a playoff run, the Dads Club would be willing to give concessions for them to utilize the field for practices and, and things like that. I believe that we have a very, a very good collaboration and a open communication going right now that will allow us to make this work well for all parties involved.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I have maybe one question, but Mr. Geiser, I sent an email, you replied about the DNR. It was asking to look at the plans.
So you'll walk through that?
Yeah, can, can you, because I just, my own, you know, let me finish first, though. I think it's a great project, collaborations from, obviously, our Dads Club, school board, and Parks and Rec. I mean, and it's getting a park done that's much, much needed at a much, much lower price than what we, we discussed before. So I absolutely love this project. I just want to make sure that the DNR would be approved with that, with your emails.
Yes, so essentially, what we're doing tonight is largely continuation of operations as is. However, there's real money involved now. So the question that came in, because our discussions have been to, to lock the field for usage of the field, permitted usage of the field. Anybody can pull a permit. And again, like we handle it right now, when it's scheduled for use of the other clubs or the schools, we don't issue those permits. So the question came in, well, can we actually lock the fields? Yes-ish. So there's some gray area, not gray area, there is a process we need to go through. So for those of you that do not know, the Community Field One, as far as we can tell, was built with federal funding back in the 70s. And when you enter into an agreement like that, based on my conversation with our DNR liaison today, that comes with a public use in perpetuity. What I have to provide her is how this permit process is going to work. And she grasped it right away. She said, this sounds exactly like how an ice arena would work. The clubs book the, the ice time, sometimes you have open ice, sometimes you have to call and schedule it. She says, it sounds exactly like that, but I have to talk with the National Park Service, and then we run it through the process there. So I see nothing that inhibits what we're talking about tonight. The only question will be, can we actually lock it or not? Again, we wouldn't be restricting public use. It's that we are formalizing a permit process to protect the investment in the facility, much like we potentially would do in any of our facilities, ice arena, or we don't have an ice arena anymore, but other uses like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah. First, I want to say I'm super excited about this project. I am just thrilled. I want to really commendate the Dads Club for bringing this to us. It is, I love it. One question that I thought of while you were going through, the cost of rehabilitating the restrooms in concession. Do we have any idea of that and how we'll fund that? Because this initial loan amount may be eaten up entirely with the field.
Yeah, we are waiting for those numbers to come back. It is not, my, my hope is to not bring that request back to you. I, I, our goal is to get them operational. It's not a full-on rehab of the building or anything like that. I mean, potentially, we're doing some paint or something like that, maybe with volunteers, but we're not totally reconstructing everything. A lot of the fixtures, as I understand, and Dan, maybe you can touch on this, a lot of the stuff is still in place. It's just getting it functional again.
After walking through last week with Nelson Brothers, we did determine that the fixtures are there. We would probably need new toilets. They've been sitting winterized for nearly four years now without anything going in other than the antifreeze that was there originally. So we would probably need to do some new toilets, urinal sinks, and things like that. But the guts are there and are able to be used from what we understand at this point.
So it's a modest cost that likely the fund will have enough to cover. Okay.
Did you have something? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Thank you all for bringing this to us tonight. This is a fantastic idea. Really excited about the collaboration and the opportunity to breathe some fresh life into this, to this amazing asset that our city has. The, the notion of an enterprise fund in particular does intrigue me. I think that's a great solution. As you, as you mentioned a couple of times, the ice arena that we had was itself funded through an enterprise fund, which is meant to, essentially, over time, it's meant to be self-sufficient, right? We shouldn't need to have transfers back and forth from different departments to be able to receive and, and generate the revenue that it needs to meet its expenditures and maybe even have its own little fund balance and that kind of good stuff. So I'm wondering, as the, as the five-year permits and things start to take shape and all of that, I look forward to hearing a little bit more about the longer-term plan. You mentioned it's coming, it's not there yet, of our vision for how the enterprise fund will be self-sustaining. Obviously, we're kind of giving it a leg up with this, with this loan, which I think is very appropriate, especially with the interest coming back to the general fund. So we'll come out ahead in the end there. But I'm looking forward to, to hearing more of the vision about how this, how we see this operating as a machine, you know, with its own revenue sources and, and appropriate expenditures. So.
I would just say that we won't be waiting until year five. We've already been talking, you know, what this looks like longer term. And I think that's in part why there is such strong interest from the three parties in this, is it buys us time. You know, we can make something happen, we can make a better, a better facility, and it gives us time to look at these longer-term questions and legalities and, and interests and programming and all that kind of stuff.
Great. Well, thanks. And certainly, not waiting until year five is, is very prudent as well. And maybe as some of those ideas begin to at least get fleshed out a little bit, to whatever extent where we can be a part of that, or at least be kept abreast of the, of the thought process, I think that'd be helpful.
It'd be warranted as well.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment? Oh, sorry, Dennis, did you have something else?
Yeah. I'll just observe on the loan, the payback period is roughly three years. Now, we'll have expenses that will occur for maintenance after the initial thing, but year four and five, roughly speaking, will be income to then reinvest back into it without us having to put more money in, and will be made whole by then, so.
And to your note, Councilmember Henin, I mean, we will be bringing an updated fee schedule as far as how other permits will be handled. I don't know that that'll be immediate, it'll probably be more, more aligned with the budget process, but we anticipate there would be some other revenues that would come along with this project as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Black?
Yeah, I do want to say this, though, that as things get posted, and we all hate when things get posted, that the most critical beneficiary of this is our athletes, our kids. So I don't want that to get lost in all of this. Like, we're doing this for our athletes, to give them the, the best possible field. So yes, this is, the math so far looks great, and that's great about the concessions in the bathroom, but, I mean, this really is about our athletes and the field not just being an eyesore, but also we want to prevent injuries. And as it stands right now, you know, I've, I've heard some of the kids say, like, you got to be careful when you're, when you're playing on that field. And that's not something the kids in our community should say about our field. So I think that's, let's keep our eye on the ball with the fact that this is going to help the kids in our, in our town.
Thank you. Okay, public comment?
I'm Dave Schmidt. I have been president of the Dads Club for several years, few years, not several. I'd just like to say that this was kind of a crazy, what can we figure out going down this road, that as soon as I talked to Nate, I saw a path forward. I have a pretty good relationship with Scott Francis. He's done a great job of us three. There's been so many phone calls and texts and just talking through, how would this look? How would that look? And I think that when you said that for athletes, that's hugely important, especially at a high school level. We go to a lot of places to play. You know, kids keep track. And so, and to keep track of what they have and what we have. I just want to say thank you. Thanks for the guidance in this. And the school district has been incredible. It's probably my favorite, best part about the whole thing is that we've all worked together really well. There hasn't been any old grudges and nothing like that. And so I hope that this just carries forward and all the other projects that we have together. You know, we have six boys, but they don't just play baseball. Lots of sports, lots of stuff, lots of interest. And I have talked to the Moms Club, I've talked to almost every group, and they're real interested in how this is going to go because you kind of see where we're headed. And just what's good for everybody, right? Mostly our kids. So thank you. Thanks for considering this. I'm excited. Thanks.
Don't go anywhere. I just want to say, I'm grateful for your creative thinking and you and the rest of the Dads Club, your willingness to figure something out. Kudos to the district to come to the table and be, and be open to hear this idea. Thank you to Nate for kind of ushering this through and, and bringing it all together. to Nate for kind of ushering this through and bringing it all together, presenting it to us in a way that made sense and seems to be doable. And I think it's going to be a win-win all the way around. Yes, first and foremost for our kids, for the athletes, but it will also be a win for the city. This will be something that we'll be proud of, that will be maintained by a fund in and of itself. It will pull it off of the general fund. So there's a lot of wins here. And I think that ultimately soccer wins because another space is freed up for them. So
Absolutely.
I just think this has been a great collaboration, and I'm really proud of all the groups that came together to make this happen. So thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Jeff Nowoski, part of the Dads Club as well. Just wanted to obviously thank everyone. I think Councilman Black hit it on the head when it is about the kids, and that's the reason we're here. And we kind of thought outside the box of how we can make this happen. I do want to comment, though, you know, we're, we're doing this and we're doing it right. But in order to sustain that field, we have to make a commitment to the maintenance. And I think that is a collaboration between Dads Club and then also the Parks and Rec. So I think it's very important, if this is going to happen, that we take care of it like it's supposed to be taken care of. I have the utmost respect for, we're free. They're going to do it right. They're going to use the right grass, the right dirt, and it's going to look like a very nice ball field out there. And it's going to be on us and the city to take care of that if we're going to, you know, invest the amount of money in that, that we're thinking. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-8824.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-8924, matter of authorizing the city manager to approve the contract with ParkNav to develop a parking portal to monitor parking occupancy rates and analyze the impacts of potential adjustments to municipal parking supply and policy throughout and near the downtown development authority's boundaries.
Is there a motion to approve M-8924?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protem Gavin.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Hand it off to Director Kapalansky. Ultimately, this is a recommendation that came from the parking study done back in 2023. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Krista.
So as City Manager Guindner said, we had a parking study that was approved in August of 2023, so just about a year ago now. And a lot of times, we have these studies and plans done, and they sit on a shelf, and they don't get implemented. So kind of harkening back to my first item, one of my goals for our department is that those plans that the council and the community invest in do not sit on the shelf. So one of the recommendations that came out of that parking study is that we do on-street parking occupancy counts on a quarterly basis to identify opportunities for public and private parking partnerships and expansion of municipal parking, and also to conduct municipal and private parking lot counts on a monthly or quarterly basis. So our planning side of our department is two people. So that is a big lift for two people. So we tried to think creatively in terms of how can we get this done in a way that maybe doesn't get us to, we're going to go out and count cars every month, but, but does get us to, we need to have some data to base our parking zoning decisions on. I know that that's come up quite often. Parking is a hot topic. And also to see how redevelopment and development of different parcels in the downtown impacts our parking supply. Where do we need more parking? Making sure that we're, when we're looking at public-private leases, that we're locating in places that make sense. So having said all that, I bring to you ParkNav. This is AI-enabled software. They attest to 80% accuracy. So this isn't going to get us to 100%, and I don't want people to think that it will. But it will cover all of the counts that we need, on-street parking near the downtown, public and private lots. So I know multiple-family parking is a hot item. We could use this to count multiple-family parking occupancy. I did reach out to some other communities to see how they felt particularly about that accuracy number, and they, they did feel like it gave them about 80% accuracy here or there. And I am willing to go out and will go out and double-check some of these counts, should council choose to move forward with this, on a very periodic basis. I also note that funds for this item were included in the budget, so this is not a request outside of the budgeted items for our department. The proposal would not only monitor parking occupancy counts in public and private lots, which is available data to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but it would also allow us to play around with those numbers. So we could take that portal and say, if we're going to add a municipal parking lot here with X number of spaces, how does the software predict that that will change parking, parking occupancy counts on-street or in other public and private spaces? So that's something that I'm very excited about. It will also allow us to change parking restrictions if we wanted to do that and see how that would change some of our parking patterns. All in all, it's going to allow me to, to get the counts that we needed to get as part of this parking study and also to make better informed decisions when we're trying to target some of these public-private leases and also ultimately looking to expand municipal parking when our parking fund reaches an amount where we can pay for some of that expansion. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Did I hear you say that you will periodically verify these counts?
Yes.
Okay. So your staff?
It will be me. I will go out and verify those counts. Probably
Because Dennis is available, too.
I know. Yes. And he's done a great job so far.
Except when he's available, the cars aren't there.
Right, right. Okay. And then the other communities that you got checked with for information, were they, would you name them? Were they?
Sure. One was, I don't know how to say it, Salinas or Salina, Texas.
Okay.
That was a little bit different. It's a bigger community than here. But the other was in North Carolina, and the name is escaping me now, but it is a community that is about the size of Berkeley, a little bit different in how its downtown is set up for sure. But they were happy with the software. I will point out that this is a one-year commitment, so that if we don't like it, we don't do it again. But it's a way that I'm able to accomplish the things that the parking study is recommending with the staff that we have.
Sure. I understand. Thank you for that. Any?
I just, were there other vendors that you looked at that were more accurate, less accurate, cheaper, more expensive?
No, this is a pretty, like, unique space. So no, I didn't do a lot of, of shopping around. If the council chooses for me to go out and do that, before you look at this item, I can, I can certainly do that. But no, I did, I did not shop around.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for, for bringing this before us tonight. And to my colleague's question, you know, I did kind of an industry scan as well. There's not a lot of folks out there that do this. We're in the early, the, the cusp of this market emerging, right? So I appreciate the fact that it's a one-year contract upfront. In case another competitor does pop up and, and provides some interesting options for us to think about as we approach the end of the cycle, then we can certainly do that. And I was wondering about, like, staff training and things like that. Was, is that included in the package? Have you talked about, you know, the time and how often you guys would get updates and things like that with the training?
Yeah, the training for this is included in the package. There's, I think it's a six-week upfront setup time where they're collecting data and building our portal. And that would include training me to use it. But yes, that is all included.
Nice. And in terms of, so this is all, you know, cameras and AI and all that kind of fun stuff, can you touch a little bit on the, the privacy aspect of this to ensure that, you know, we're not snagging license plates and all that kind of stuff? Just to ensure the public, you know, if we're taking, if we're gathering the data through optical means, certainly, you know, we want to just make sure that it's anonymous, but yet still accurate enough that we can do the kind of modeling that you described.
Right. So there are instances where if we have cameras up in our municipal lots, they will use that and use that to help count the number of cars in the lots. They're not going into a level where it looks at license plates or anything like that. Most of the data is collected just via cell phone.
Yeah. Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Henin.
Yeah. So, yeah, I've looked in this quite in depth, and I'm skeptical that it can work for us. For example, the cities that cited that it works for, they have compact downtowns, and we have a very linear one, completely surrounded by residential. So it's hard to differentiate, you know, is someone parked in their driveway or parked on the street and that sort of thing. I am going to vote yes. I think it's a low cost enough to try it. The caution I'd have is that if it ends up not being very accurate, that we don't waste a lot of time on it. It's a sunk cost. Write it off. You know, we're doing this to try and eliminate staff burden. And, you know, if it doesn't work out, let's just move on and see what else we can find. So that would be my caution with it. I'm skeptical, very skeptical, but hopeful that it works out.
Anyone else? Public comment on this agenda item. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Kapalansky.
Thank you.
Is there, oh, sorry. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-8924.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Yes. M-8924 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O-824, matter of approving the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 30-186 through 30-189 of Article 5 Rental Property of Chapter 30 Businesses of the Berkeley City Code to allow for the regulation, licensing, and collection of fees associated with short-term rentals, prescribe, prescribe a penalty for violations and repeal conflicting ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve O-0824?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Guindner.
Turn it right over to Director Kapalansky, please.
So the, at the last meeting on September 16th, the council did approve the first reading of this ordinance, and we talked pretty much, pretty extensively about it at that time. So I was going to go over the things that changed for the second reading. A provision requiring quiet hours matching the city's noise ordinance would have to be posted in a short-term rental. These were all at the request of council. A provision requiring the city's on-street parking regulations would be posted in the short-term rental. And then language requiring storing of refuse cans was reworded per Councilmember Henin's suggestions. A definition of violation has been added. And then I want to talk about quickly the main change to this. So there was quite a bit of discussion at council that there needed to be a way to hold short-term rentals accountable and take away the license for bad actors. So staff did some checking around, talked with some other communities, and, and this is what we came up with. So this would be a three-strike-you're-out type scenario. And those strikes would be if an application contains fraudulent information, that would be immediately revoked. I should correct myself there. And then the three strikes for out, you're out would be for three or more violations. And I want to point out that those would have to be confirmed by the court. So when a violation is written, particularly for people who are viewing at home, that does not count immediately. It needs to work its way through the court process and ultimately be affirmed by the court. And at that point, that would count as one. Now, those violations would have to be related to the reasonable occupancy of the property. And I'll give you an example that staff was kind of getting stuck on. So if there was a situation where at the property, there was a domestic incident or something, that is not necessarily related to the occupancy of the property as a short-term rental. That would be a separate issue between those two parties that the police would handle, et cetera, et cetera. But it would not constitute a violation. Things like a noise ordinance, which are impacting surrounding properties, that would count. So I just want to make that distinction. And we can talk through different scenarios if you'd like to, because we spent a lot of time at the staff level doing that. There would also be, if there are code issues, and that would be related to life safety, sanitation, or weatherability, because we felt those things were directly related to occupancy of the property. So for example, if they left the trash cans out, that would not count as a violation. But if you don't have working smoke detectors, that does count, because that relates to the occupancy of the property. And I'd be happy to expand on that as well. So those were the main changes. Happy to answer any questions? And that's all.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Henin.
Yeah. I love where we landed. I apologize. I didn't send these to you earlier today. I did have them. I have two changes I wanted to propose. One is, they're both in section 30-187A. And number seven, as written, is, you get the intent, but it's bad grammar. So just changing that to, a property requires two off-street parking spaces to be eligible as a short-term rental unit. So it's same meaning, just better, you know, better language. The other thing I want to propose is, I'll float this by council first, is that we do not allow, if you have a short-term rental license, you are not eligible for an annual parking permit. Is that a direction we would want to go?
Is that not the direction we've discussed?
So council did discuss that direction, and I think it's fine to include it in this ordinance.
Sure.
As we monitor the parking policy, I, I don't necessarily want to bring the parking policy back to you right away because we, we just did that. But I will make a note to make sure that it makes it in there, too, because I do think that that's a good space for it. But if it's in both places, yeah, I think that that's fine. My mind was originally as in, I will add this to the parking policy, because I think that's a better place.
Okay.
But there's no harm in both places.
Okay. Yeah. So, so for tonight, I have a number 15 in that section eight. Properties licensed as short-term rentals are ineligible for annual parking permits as defined in section, and this is the part we just passed, 12294 dot two, as amended. Temporary permits are allowed.
That sounds good.
We're good? So are we modifying?
You would need to amend the, the motion.
Friendly amendment, Councilmember Henin?
Maker of the motion on attention. So yes.
Councilmember Black as the seconder of that motion. Are you good with the changes as stated by Councilmember Henin?
Yes.
Great. Excellent. Public comment. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kapalansky.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O-0824.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. O-0824 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-9024, matter of considering the addition of a staff position and related budget amendments.
Is there a motion to approve M-9024?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Guindner.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It should be no surprise that I'm bringing this item before you. I think I started raising concerns about our human resources, resources early on in my tenure here. Many of you know, I've come from a number of different communities, and both in communities the same size of Berkeley as well as communities smaller than Berkeley, I'm used to having a trained, educated, human resources professional there to support our staff, not just from a benefit standpoint and things of that nature, but full service when it comes to all of our required federal, state, safety, all of those requirements. So with that, I am recommending that we have, we amend our, our budget to allow for the addition of a new personnel position. This would be for human resources. Having talked with staff over many months, this is a need that has been identified and discussed extensively across all of our department heads. This is a, this is an area that they would love to have the support. As you saw, the job description is not something you typically would approve, but I wanted to make sure you knew kind of what we're looking at as far as this position goes. And this position would be involved with organizational leadership, strategic HR leadership. Those are defined more in the job description. Talent management, hiring and attracting of talent. All of our departments have been going through this, particularly police is very heavy in this. DPS is very, excuse me, DPW is very heavy in this, and they get virtually no support. We have staff that will help get things posted, things like that, but not full service. Our HR systems and data management, benefits and comp administration, employee engagement, labor relations, policy development, risk management, which is a big one, and then any of our DEIB is kind of how it's been expanded to, any of those types of initiatives and efforts, they would be working with our staff on. We do not have a specific salary looked at. We have a budget number in there that we think is accurate. I've been looking at some of our communities that are nearby, trying to get some comparables as far as what we would post this at. The dollars would come from the general fund, although it does serve all funds across the, the city. The last thing I would note is, if this is approved tonight, this will not be my hire or my decision. The last thing I would note is, if this is approved tonight, this will not be my hire or my decision. What this does is it gives your next city manager the ability to move quickly on getting this position out there. Once I start talking with them, if they're ready to roll, I'll help get it promoted and pushed and all that so that they're ready to interview and hire as soon as they're on board. Again, we feel that unanimously across our group, we feel this is a big need. It's a long time coming. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Any questions from Councilmember Black?
Nate, I guess I know this is coming. Can you give an example of a community that currently does not have a full-time HR person? And how are they making it work? Because we're certainly gonna get questions, or we could get questions from the community based on, hey, is this really a, is this a want or a need?
Of this size of community?
Yes.
There's none I could pull off the pop in my head.
So every other community of this size has an HR, full-time HR professional?
I would have to look into that further and tell you for sure. But most of the communities that I have worked with of this size, of a hundred and twenty employees, I mean, think of a business with a hundred and twenty employees, plus all your seasonals. When you look at as busy as we are, with as much of the, I'll just say, stuff that needs to get done, this will be a huge lift and a huge burden off of all of our department directors to allow us to move forward in a more strategic and proactive manner versus trying to react to everything that gets thrown at us. I can certainly pull more information if this is, if it's not something that we're ready to move on tonight. But in the two communities that I've been in, that have been smaller and the same size and as complex, if not more complex, they've had HR.
Thank you.
Councilmember Velani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to add some additional commentary onto this request. I know that there's been some concern in the neighborhood, other feedback that we've gotten, is this necessary? It doesn't seem like we're a large enough city. As someone who has served as an HR professional, I have been an HR director at a company much smaller than the size of our city. I had a full-time HR generalist. Our finance team handled all of our payroll and benefit administration. So the HR role is a very large role, and I think it's one that's very necessary for what we have going on here. And the size that we are absolutely dictates that we would have someone full-time in that role. If we also think about some of the strategic needs of the city and that what we're also tasking with our new city manager to come on and do. We have several key departments that need to have hiring decisions made about them. We are still trying to get our strategic plan launched, and we need to make sure that that is married with the budget and the finances and all of the department directors, and that's something that an HR person can help with. It goes far beyond making sure that your time off is in there and that you've checked the box for any kind of compliance trainings, things like that. That person's really gonna be a partner to all of the different areas and help just bring together that cohesiveness in addition to hopefully having time to be able to like grow and develop our staff so that they can also accomplish their own professional goals as well. So I am very much in favor of this. I was shocked when I came on board here that we did not have someone in that type of capacity and just, you know, seeing what I've seen over the past couple of years, I do agree that this is something that is very much in need, and I think this will be an investment not only in our people here, but also in the community and the long-term plan of it as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, two questions. So the cost budgeted for this position is not just the salary, but it's also the benefits. It's all in?
Correct.
Right. And then, did we look at outsourcing?
We, I, did not look into that for a couple of different reasons. One, I'm familiar with one other community, again, there may be others, that has chosen to outsource. They're much smaller than we are. They outsource with a firm that is not specifically heavy into municipal HR, which is different than the private sector. And again, just knowing local government, I feel very firmly that this is the right move for the city. I mean, I worked in a community of the same size. Now, yes, they had more employees, a different type of community. We had three people, all focused on HR. And we have zero. We had some finance help to help with some paperwork and things like that, but at a higher level, strategic resources, hiring, firing, discipline, all that kind of stuff, which HR is, aside from maybe one or two other areas, HR is your area of highest risk. That's where your highest risk and financial liability is gonna come, is through an HR matter, whether that's negotiations, workman's comp, what have you. And we have nobody designated to focus in on that, nobody to designate on changes in state and federal law. Nobody is focusing on that. Instead, we're relying on all of our department directors to piece it together, to get things done.
And in that piecing together?
I'm glad this is so funny.
No, I'm sure there's a lack of consistency.
Yeah.
You know, that's the piece that's lost as well, so.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, public comment.
Hello? I'm not a stranger to you guys. You know me, Lori Fielder, Cumberland Road. And I recently retired from the Finance Department. So I have this whole thing, because I know I only have three minutes. But after all that's been said, and I am gonna just speak from what I know. So I do agree that we need some HR. But I will say that for all these years, it's been handled by finance. And until all the changes that have happened in finance in the last year and a half since our finance director and then another person in the department left, and she had all the, most of the knowledge, yeah, it has got a little chaotic, because we didn't know all the answers. We didn't know how things were being done. And I think that as far as HR, yes, we could use someone who knows the laws, because that is what is missing. But there have not been a lot of issues until we had all these changes happen in HR, I mean, in finance. So as much as I think that we do need someone or something, I think that the way this has been presented, I read the amendment, or the whatever, what do we call it? The resolution, whatever. Thank you. And the fact that all of the department heads have supported this is not entirely true. I talked to some of the department heads today. I didn't even know about this. Someone brought it to my attention. And they said as much as they said, yeah, we need some HR help. Nobody agreed, and most were surprised by the hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There wasn't any looking at outsourcing, going to an HR firm or anything. No options were looked at. And I think that my biggest issue on this is, you know, I understand that the two finance positions that haven't been filled, it's gonna, we're gonna hold off on that for the new city manager. The Parks and Rec, Permanent Parks and Rec Director, that's being held off for the new city manager. I think you just selected who you want to be your new city manager a couple hours ago. Yet you're bringing forth a new position for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars without waiting for this new city manager to come in. You know, she could have some ideas. She might have some experience. And, you know, as far as, that's a lot of money. I have watched in finance our payroll go up. If I told you how much in the last few years, your heads would spin. And I know that payroll goes up, obviously. But we're talking about adding now another hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And, you know, we have residents, you know, who are complaining about the infrastructure not being taken care of. Okay, one second, I'm almost done.
Nope, you're done. You're done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion from council, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a couple of points that I do want to point out. When it comes to hiring, like, a consultant, having someone like that for HR, HR is part of your culture. And we are at a point with new leadership, all of that coming on, that it's imperative that that person is part of the culture to be there, that they are invested in it as well, so that they can help create that, they can live it, they can breathe it. I can tell you, having been in that seat, and also just knowing about personnel law, you may think, oh, there's not that many issues going on. We don't hear about those things, because you can't hear about those things. So there's law against that to protect the privacy of employees about what's going on. So while it may not seem that there are things happening, there can be. I can tell you, there would be employees that would come into my office, they'd shut the door, and they would just share all kinds of stuff. It might have been what was going on in their personal lives, because a HR person gets to be the mom or the also office psychologist as well. It might be, hey, I'm having just issues getting along with this person. Can you help me? Give me some ideas of how I can troubleshoot it. So just general coaching ideas. Or what do I do differently in this type of situation? And sometimes there's some very real things. I've had situations relating to violence in the workplace, harassment in the workplace, and that HR is that starting point and that safety net for everyone there. And when it's someone that is just ingrained and part of that organization, that everybody knows, that they can talk to and trust, I think that is just so imperative. And then just also to reiterate for everybody listening at home, that we are not recommending that this person comes in at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for salary. That is inclusive of all of their benefits that come as part of their employment, which is a very significant piece of that, and it's the same that all of our other employees have as well. So their actual salary would be, you know, right in the marketplace for any HR professional of that area.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
If I could also add, we have not made a decision on who that is. There's been no job posting. The new city manager will have ample opportunity to provide their input. If they think this is a direction they don't want to go, there is time to pivot. But we are staging them so that if they are ready to go and do agree with it, that they can move quickly and swiftly, and we can fill this much-needed position.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, and to build on that point, the other openings that we have are already on the books, so to speak. So when we talk about like the Permanent Director of Parks and Rec and those kinds of things, that's already on the books. And so that's obviously something that the next city manager will help lead in that charge. This is just putting this on the books as well, so that they can, if they choose, pursue this path. They have the mechanism to do so. It doesn't mean that they're required to or any of that, but at least we're providing them with the tools so that if they find value in this, that they could, they can make that decision to fill that, just like the other positions, which are already on the books.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from council? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-9024.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Velani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-9024 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-9124, matter of considering the disposition of surplus property.
Is there a motion to approve M-9124?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Velani. Mr. Ganser?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. So this item, I'm bringing four to you for your consideration. Whether I have a strong recommendation or not, I don't know if I'd say it was strong. I know what I would, I would probably do if I was in your shoes. But we had a single-family home developer that has done work in other communities reach out about this particular parcel. This is located at three-five-zero-one Griffith Avenue, inquiring, inquiring on whether or not this property was for sale. And knowing enough about the charter and how that works, one, I don't have the authority to tell them if a parcel is for sale. I said, put it in writing. And two, if you did want to actually put this for sale, it would require an open bidding process. That being said, having talked with both Public Works and Community Development, this particular location, as best we can tell, was obtained right around the Great Recession, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And it was originally intended to be used as parking. We have not done anything with that parcel since we acquired it, other than mowing it on a regular basis. In looking at, or excuse me, in reaching out to county equalization, again, they won't give you an appraisal or anything like that. This is nothing we can hold them on. But when you look at what are similarly, similarly sized parcels in our R-1D single-family, many of them have an assessed land value at seventy-six thousand and change, which puts the true cash market value at roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That being said, if council wanted to offer this unit for sale, or excuse me, this parcel for sale, you'd have to authorize me to put out a request or proposal for sale or, and/or development. Again, talking with some staff, hypothetically speaking, if this, if this parcel was to sell, what would be recommending is that those dollars would go into the new parking fund, which the new annual pass, as well as, I believe there's a fee in lieu of that's part of the new zoning ordinance. Those revenues would go in there to maintain and expand on parking uses in and around, primarily around downtown. The piece of paper that I provide you tonight, that Victoria will have for the minutes, this is an area where we own a parcel on the south side of Twelve Mile. This is over on Cummings, I believe it is, south of Twelve Mile. Staff believe, and I should say that that house is no longer there. That was torn down after we acquired it. But staff believes that that area would be a higher and greater opportunity for expanded parking versus the north side. This area on Cummings, the west side of Cummings, south of Twelve Mile, is in an area where we have parking challenges. Now, again, hypothetically speaking, let's say a hundred and fifty thousand comes in, that's not gonna completely install a new parking lot there, but it gets us a lot closer. So that being said, I'm happy to try to answer any questions. This is not a time-sensitive scenario. We don't have to decide on this tonight. But just so you know, the offer is out there, and we've also put forth kind of how we would recommend using those dollars if you were to sell, where we would suggest the proceeds be used.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Patterson?
One question. Can you give the address of the, the black and white picture? Is it on there? And I can't see it either?
You probably can't see it.
I'm trying to look it up on my computer, that's all. It's right on the corner.
Three-eight-three-nine or three-three-three-nine?
Of Cummings?
Cummings, yep. It's Cummings and Twelve Mile, just south of the alley there.
Okay.
It's directly adjacent to that daycare parking.
Okay, I see it.
Have we, have we had some conversation with that person there yet?
The daycare?
Yeah.
So I haven't been involved too much in the Cummings parking lot discussions. It happened, I think, just before I got here. From what I know, there's been conversations with the owner of the church property that's there, and then the owner of Gatekeepers. I don't know that the daycare in particular has been reached out to, but there's a couple different property owners, and I know preliminary conversations have started with some of them.
Yeah.
Any interest from Green Lantern in that?
Well, it's not directly adjacent to Green Lantern.
It's not, but it's.
It's within that five hundred?
Green Lantern would love for that parking to be there, yes.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at this versus the one to the north, and I'm not an engineer, but it seems to me we could probably get a few more parking spaces here than we could in the other lot as well. We would need to do some preliminary drawings and things like that. But again, tight on resources, trying to come up with creative ways to make things happen. And so we wanted to make sure we brought this item forward to you.
May I add one thing to that? Just to point out, we don't have any public parking in this section of the city. And there are a lot of small parcels there that have no parking spaces at all allotted to them. So it creates a big problem when these small businesses want to come in, and we have to say, we cannot approve your business, because you have zero parking spaces. And you might require one or two, and if you cannot get your neighbors to share, we can't sign the business license. So this would help with that, too.
And there's that, too.
I'm sorry, that was for the proposed redesign of the Cummings lot, not the lot in question tonight to sell.
Right. If the Cummings lot were to become a reality, that helps those businesses.
Okay.
Where the lot is in question tonight, we have municipal parking. I'm not saying- I'm not saying that there wouldn't be an opportunity or need in the future for more, but there's just a much greater need down by the Cummings area.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Councilmember Valani.
Do we have any kind of estimates of what it would take to get the Cummings area lot into usable parking? Like, is this, we offload one, and it pays for the other? Can you give us a, at a ballpark of what we'd be looking at?
Yes, some preliminary engineering designs have been done, and this would include the Cummings lot, plus working with the property owners that are adjacent and including that alley. So to create one larger parking lot, we're talking about 30 spaces. The estimate is $900,000.
Okay. So this would barely dent it?
It would barely dent it, but right now we have $0 allotted to it.
It's eliminated.
And that does include stormwater infrastructure and all the things that we are requiring other property owners to do, too.
Thank you.
I had one question. So the lot for tonight is just a green space that's a lawn.
Yes.
I don't want to call it, you know, it's green, but.
Right.
Are they pushing snow there in the winter to get them out of the municipal lots? Do we know? Because that, if we take that away, that's leaving those other lots an area for snow to build up. So I'm just curious.
Not that I know of, and we've talked about this lot, Sean and I have, because of some alley situations we have going on there. He didn't, has, does not have a concern about where to put the snow, and that hasn't come up in our discussion. So I don't want to say absolutely, but not that I know of.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just a quick question. So would the proposed sale of this property, would this fall into what information we are going to be gathering from ParkNav? I mean, just based on the initial look at the map, it looks like it.
Stay there.
Might as well stay.
Yeah.
Yes, this could be something that we could use the ParkNav portal for. So if we were to say, you know, we can napkin draw, and see if we can fit an additional 10 spaces on here, then we could plug that in and say, what does that do to parking counts in those areas?
Yeah.
So yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm not, anecdotally, I don't see that lot filled up when I'm there, usually. But if we're going to be activating this ParkNav anyway, I'd be interested to see what we might need, if we might need something in that space.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Henin.
Yeah, so, not a question, but just my thoughts on this. You know, the parking story is really compelling, but I'm still strongly opposed to this. You know, a short-term infusion of cash is great, but realistically, it's exceedingly rare for us to get more land. And, you know, I'm looking at not just the next few years, I'm looking at a 50-year time horizon. And, you know, just because we don't have a use for it now, haven't had a use for it in the past 15 years, doesn't mean we won't in the future. And, you know, in the worst case, it becomes a small little pocket park for, you know, the neighborhood there. So, you know, I'm just strongly opposed, just in general, to the city giving up any land, because there is no more for us to get.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments from council? Public input on this agenda item? Okay.
Can I throw out one more clarification?
Oh, of course, yes.
Just, and just to be clear, so everybody knows how this process would work. If you voted to move this forward, you still would have to vote to accept a bid. This does not totally end it all tonight. But if you're going to put it out to bid, we should be ready to dispose of it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Just to clarify our vote, no, just to clarify the vote, this would be to move it forward if we vote yes.
This is to put it out for a request for proposal. Good.
Councilmember Black.
I don't want to do this to Kristen, but all right. So we put this out to bid, we sell it. Do we take those proceeds and set them aside for Cummings, even though it might just be a dent, or what are we doing with the proceeds of the sale?
So if you were to sell it, our idea, staff's idea, was that those proceeds could go into the newly established parking fund.
Okay.
It would be a great nest egg. Those funds would be used, hopefully one day, for the construction of a lot like Cummings, but could also be used for things like the public-private partnership we just did near Garden Central. There were some minimal costs associated with repaving that and striping it and putting up some signage, so it could be used for those sorts of things, too. It would be, it is going to be a parking maintenance slash expansion fund.
So if, if this all were to play out, when we would, and again, I'm not being presumptuous here, what you guys decide is all up to you. I have, we have no strong feelings one way or another. But if it was to be sold, part of that recommendation that we bring forward would be award a bid and direct staff to put proceeds into the parking fund, is what we would currently recommend.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 9124.
Gavin?
No.
Henin?
No.
Patterson?
No.
Valani?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
No. The motion has failed.
Thank you.
We are now at the communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Councilmember Henin.
All right.
Thank you. The tree board didn't have a quorum for their last meeting. Their next meeting will be on Monday, October 28. The zoning board of appeals hasn't met since our last meeting, but will meet a week from today, October 14, at 7:00 PM to hear three cases. My next talk with Dennis, office hours are coming up Tuesday, October 15, at the library. Stop by anytime between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, and with your questions or concerns. And then I'm sure we'll hear more about this later, but just wanted to call out the Pancake Breakfast fundraiser for Berkeley Cares Pantry. I was very happy to help and really pleased with the turnout that we got.
Thank you, Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Flora sent me a note regarding the Community for Technology and Engagement. Last meeting that they had talked about plans for the group to help assist her. As you know, her communications department is small, so they discussed that. So looking forward to it. I want to echo Councilmember Henin's thoughts. Thank Councilmember Patterson, his group. The Pancake Breakfast was awesome. Had a chance to make more scrambled eggs. I've never made 18 scrambled eggs in one pan before, so that was, that was fun. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. And then the only thing I want to say is, I lost my mom in 2018 to breast cancer, so it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so want to say I had an opportunity to go to Brawls for a Cause in Royal Oak on Saturday night. Cried a little bit, very inspirational stories, but just everybody, if you can do something to raise awareness this month, please do so. So this is my, my pink day. So, but yeah, if you can do something for, for the cause this month, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Planning Commission met last Thursday. They discussed some rezoning ordinance comments that were received from the Redevelopment Ready Communities Review of the draft ordinance rewrite. Their next meeting is October 22, here in Chambers, at 7:00 PM. And then the Beautification Committee also met. They are working with the football boosters to help gather some volunteers and plant some, a tree, working with the school district. They're discussed about their ideas of adoption of a garden and getting the community involved. You would adopt a space very rewarding for everyone. They do have an October planning and cleanup. I do not have the date, so I apologize for that. And then they discussed a siluminary or the equivalent idea. For this year, they were thinking of doing it down Coolidge. Instead of in the neighborhoods, everyone would bring them to Coolidge as a fundraiser for them. And then obviously, thanks to Councilmember Black, Councilmember Henin, for helping with the food pantry, and Mayor Dean for helping plan that, and of course, buying the bacon. One of the best parts, I don't know, my strawberry mix was pretty good, too, but healthy or, or not. But thank you for that and your dedication to our city and Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. And I also have to thank my students. We did have eight of my students there. They were super excited to, to come and give up a Saturday morning at 6:50. So they were actually there by 7:00 when the door unlocked, but 6:50, they helped unload my car. So I do appreciate them. I'm sure they're watching from home. I appreciate each and every one of them because it was a long day on Saturday, but they provided some stroke education, which is valuable to our community members, as well as helped flip some pancakes. So it was more fun than that. So thank you to everyone who was involved in that.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Thank you. The Environmental Advisory Committee is meeting next Thursday on the 17th of October at 6:30 PM on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. For the Berkeley Area Chamber, the State of the Cities and Best of Berkeley Awards are coming up on October 23, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the American Legion. Tickets are $30, so get your tickets now because you won't want to miss that. Today is actually the last day that you can nominate a business for the Best of Berkeley Awards, so get those nominations in before midnight tonight. And then lastly, I would like to send big congratulations to the Berkeley Bears football team on their homecoming win, and also to the band, the cheer, the dance teams, everyone that was out there. We have so many students with so much talent who put so much hard work into that night. And most importantly, we won the Catalpa Sign back from our nemesis, Royal Oak, so that's great that we have that. But what was really amazing about the night is that we had four of our public safety officers who are also Berkeley graduates, helping to keep the area safe and patrolling around the field, and just made it a really great night for everybody. And unfortunately, in a time where some of our neighboring cities had to shut some of their games down early because of violence and other things happening, it was just so reassuring as a parent in the stands to be able to look out there, see so many familiar faces, and see that type of presence out there, making it a safe and enjoyable event for all. And I think it's just such a wonderful thing that our public safety does, and just shows the true commitment that they have to our community that is above and beyond. So thank you and congrats to all those students.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Parks and Rec Advisory Board will meet October 10, at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, and then the Library Board will be meeting at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, the 16th, at the library. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Historical Committee meets next week's Tuesday, the 15th, 7:00. And they assure us all that new holiday mugs are on their way, so look for information on those very soon. And please visit us at the museum or online at BerkeleyHistory.com. And you guys know, I'm dying to say this, right? You know, in addition to it being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I have stories about that, too. It is a Brookley month here in the city. And it was given to me that, you know, that Witches Night Out is coming up here in, in the, on Thursday, the 10th, from 5:00 until 9:00. So please come on out and enjoy all the festivities and fun that, that our downtown offers. It's been a terrific, terrific event. Last year, I was one of the familiars that went along with the witches and was able to enjoy what they let me. Additional items coming up include the Ghost Chase on the 18th, from 5:00 until 9:00, Trick or Treat Stroll and the Monster Mash on the 26th. With overlapping times, the Trick or Treat Stroll is from 12 to 3:00, and the Monster Mash along Coolidge is from 2:00 to 5:00. And finally, we close out the month with Vampire Blood Drive on the 29th at the American Legion. And for more information on that and so much more, please visit DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was Erica Lanes who once said, "At the heart of leadership is a desire to serve and a dedication to helping others become great." Now, earlier tonight, earlier tonight, we met in an open meeting to share our thoughts and highlight our preferred candidates to fill this open city manager position. We now enter contract negotiations, and all of that process is appropriate and good to make sure everybody's on the same page and comfortable with the agreement that we're looking forward to. And so hopefully, we'll be able to receive and see, see a contract that we can vote on and welcome our new city manager into the mix. I'd just like to extend my gratitude, again, I've said this a few times now, to, to everybody that made this happen, to the Subcommittee that narrowed down the, the choices, to, to James for bringing us all the candidates in the first place, for Nate for guiding us through this, and for helping steer the ship so well in the interim. And I believe that we're well positioned to finish this calendar year on really great, really solid footing, and hit the ground running for an amazing 2025. And so I'm very excited about that. And if the feeling moves, whether for our city manager, or for breast cancer, or Brookley, or just because you feel like it, please hug somebody, it really, it makes a difference. And it's, it's probably needed more than you realize. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Ganser?
Yes, just to piggyback on Councilmember Baker, we've already got the conversation started. I heard from your city manager candidate, as well as the search executive, who confirmed what I had understood. There is excitement. And we've already worked on trying to coordinate getting a draft contract in front of Ms. Van Vlek, and getting a meeting scheduled for next week. So knock on wood, you'll see a contract on the 21st.
Thank you. Attorney Crist?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Well, I have a couple things. So first of all, I was, had the opportunity to attend the public safety graduation this past Thursday, and I have not, had never attended one of those before. And Thursday is the day that I'm with my grandson, so I had a little friend with me. And I just thought, we'll stay as long as we can. And when we have to, he's four. When we have to leave, we have to leave. He made it through the whole thing. But we are getting ready to welcome PSO Chris Fettis. And in addition to having all the character traits that we like to see in a public safety officer, what the department's looking for, he has 10 years in the Marine Corps, plus a year and a half between the police, fire, and medical training. So this is a large, large investment, and it's all of our public safety officers. It's that kind of training. So it's going to be that year and a half before we can really count him toward the count. But it's inspiring and encouraging to be in that space and watch all these men and women graduating, and the accolades, and then all their brothers and sisters who attend in support of them. It was quite moving. So all of that to say also that this, given the length of that process and the specific things that we look for, it underscores that need for retention, that I know we work on recruitment, retention, compensation, and I, I always throw in the mental health piece as well. Officer Fettis is also the class executive officer, or the XO. And Officer Donnelly, who's in the academy right now, is also the XO of his class. So we have two incoming public safety officers that are leaders in their classes, and I know that they will also be leaders here. So I just want to give PSO Fettis a warm welcome. Can't wait till you finish all your training, and so that we can welcome you to our public safety department. The pub crawl was brought back after a multi-year hiatus. I volunteered. I said, just put me where you need me. So I was on one of the shuttles, which was entertaining in and of itself. But it was great to see, see old friends, make new friends. The overall vibe, people were really happy that the pub crawl was back, and so I look forward to, you know, continuing that tradition as well. And you've heard already that we just had a pancake breakfast benefiting the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. I designated October as Berkeley Cares Month, invited all of council to collaborate with Councilmember Patterson and I on this. And it was just, first of all, Councilmember Patterson, any day, anytime, I will be on your team. We can, we can be on the same team. It was great. We worked well together. The addition of Councilmember Henin and Councilmember Black just kind of rounded out Saturday morning. It was great fun. And it was also, it just gave me a great feeling, watching our nursing students be there. They pitched in. There was nothing they said that they wouldn't do. Watching them explain symptoms of a stroke when they really weren't, they really didn't want to do it, but they did it anyway. So they were educating the community, as well as volunteering, and in whatever we needed them to do. So walking, leading up to this past Saturday, I was a little concerned about the lack of pre-registration for this event. I think we had 10 people. And we had put in a lot of work, and I was like, 10, we could just be in my kitchen. So I called my good friend Bridget Marley, and I said, hey, I need a favor. I said, you know, our, our pre-sales have been dismal at best. Can you just reach out to your network? And, oh, yeah, of course. So what does she do? She makes a Facebook post and puts on there, whoever shares this, I will donate $5 to the food pantry. So there was another $140 that came, went to the pantry because of her creativity and her efforts. So well done, Bridget. And then another resident, Allison Dillon, she came and volunteered Saturday morning, did whatever was asked of her. So it was great to see some resident participation. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Zach Dunlap for always saying yes. Zach, whenever there's a community need, he shows up, he says yes, he supports in any way he can. He was there, stayed the whole time. If we had questions, like, "How do you turn on the overhead fan when there's pancake mania going on?", he's just a great community partner, and I'm truly honored to have Berkeley First as part of our Berkeley community. So, we had a great group of volunteers, we had participation from council, we raised $965 for the food pantry, and that is pure dollars to them. Councilmembers Patterson and Black and I covered the food costs, so this all went directly to the pantry. The pantry and the church collaboration is a great example, I know I've said this before, but it's when you have community partners coming together and sharing those resources, so glad to see that as well. And on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Patterson and Valani? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, October 7th, 2024, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.